Five thirty-one or five thirty-two, time to get started and officially call the meeting to order. Uh, item number two on the agenda is public comment. And, um, this public comment, Madam Clerk, is for the public hearing.
This one is for the whole meeting, but the budget comments could be wait, they could wait until the public hearing if people chief to.
Okay.
They could do it now or at the hearing.
Okay, but specifically, we're looking for...
Comment, this would be comment on anything, but the town manager is gonna do a presentation on the budget, so if anybody's talking on the budget, they might wanna wait until the actual public hearing part of it, but either way.
On the budget?
Correct.
So this is for like a normal meeting?
Like the quarterly part of it.
Okay. Everybody understand that that wants to speak, what we're gonna talk about first in the public comments? All right, is there anyone that wants to address the commissioners for public comments as just described by the clerk? Okay, number three, public hearing, this public hearing is the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. And, um, Mr. Hewitt or Madam Clerk, do you have anything you wanna say before we entertain people speaking?
I don't, I'm sure. Uh, do you want me to do the presentation now?
Uh, if that satisfies you and the commissioners, that's fine with me.
Good afternoon, uh, this is the public hearing for the FY twenty-three, twenty-four budget, also known as the town spending plan for the fiscal year beginning one July twenty-three and ending thirty June twenty-four. I've got three main components of the public hearing presentation, gonna talk about the schedule that we've adhered to during the budget development, a buy fund, uh, explanation, and then some of the highlights of the budget itself. Uh, at the risk of being redundant, I've included this in here, we've seen it several times, started out with the goal of having three budget workshops, we've managed to do that with today being the third workshop, um, and then depending on how the board wants to proceed in the consideration of the ordinance. So we're, we're on the, on the final backstretch, I believe, here. Uh, buy fund overview before you, um, the total budget is about ninety-eight million dollars, but the lion's share of that is, of course, the carrying shell of the FEMA project that we have to keep the books open on until the final closeout. Uh, without FEMA, our budget's close to twenty-four point seven million dollars, broken out by five point one in the general fund, eight million in the water fund, B Part is programmed at six point two million, canal dredging at three point three, the water and sewer capital reserve each, um, have two hundred and twelve, and then sewer has three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. The beach and inlet reserve fund is programmed at one point three seven five million, and of course, the, the big carrying cost of the FEMA project, seventy-three million. And contrary to what is in the, I think it's the very first page of the budget, the ordinance itself, um, or it's on the last page, um, I think that we had a, we had a typo, um, the tax rate is proposed at fourteen cent, and contrary to what on page twenty-three, it says twenty cent point one four, is just, it was a carry over there, so it's proposed at fourteen cents. Uh, it transfers, proposed to transfer seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars to the B Part Fund to subsidize various debt and capital expenses, it funds financial software replacement, and funds an inspection vehicle and permitting modernization. In addition to, and I'm showing this in the general fund, but it spreads across all three of the funds, uh, there's a COLA of three point five percent and four percent merit pay, which is stormwater program funded along with resurfacing High Point Street. Over in the water and sewer fund, we've had some sewer system debt retirement that's gonna allow the sewer capital fee to decrease a bit down to four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. It programs the Greensboro Street Sewer Lift Station upfit and contains capital outlays for assorted valve pits, water meters, and a replacement generator set. And then it also continues the funding for the water system asset inventory, which the, uh, second water tower will be a part of. It uses beach inlet and capital reserves of three hundred and forty-seven thousand to pay for Lockwood Falling Inlet Maintenance dredging, and then it also satisfies debt services for the pier and block queue, in addition to providing the funding for fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars in funding of the core storm damage reduction study. And it also funds permitting for shovel-ready future town projects, which would include finding sand and doing the engineering assessments. In addition, the, there is one facilities maintenance technician in a vehicle in the budget, in the B Part budget, and it also funds several of the required maintenance activities attached to our FEMA project, uh, tilling, rock raking, that kinda thing. It provides for strand and water, waterway access enhancements, beach mats, kayak launches, parking lots, and walkway repairs, in addition to funding the initial pier repair, Jordan Boulevard, public restrooms, block queue parking, and seven ninety-six improvements. Uh, the FEMA fund, again, that's a, a shell, um, that is carrying a empty, it's an empty vessel now, but we're still keeping on the books. Canal dredging, looks like there's gonna be a need to do some entrance canal and spot dredging in Harbor Acres this winter, um, which this budget does, and it also funds disposal site policy development and some permitting requirements, 'cause now we have to modify our permit, uh, in order to do the spot dredging. The water and sewer capital reserve funds, this is where the system development fees are housed, um, and those would accrue to two hundred and twelve thousand for the water system and three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars for the sewer system. Uh, and again, as already mentioned, the beach and inlet reserve fund transfers three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars over to B Part to pay for the inlet, Lockwood Falling Inlet Maintenance. Um, so as, as presented, the budget is balanced in accordance with the Physical Control Act. And I forgot to mention right at the first of the meeting, this budget, um, reflects the administrative revisions that y'all made at the last meeting, so that's, we've done that. Um, and again, to regurgitate the schedule, um, today's fifteenth of June and would be the third workshop that we've had so far, and that's all I have.
Okay.
I, I will go ahead and, and add, you know, depending on what the board wants to do, um, after talking with the clerk, uh, this budget, uh, in administrative form, depending on what y'all wanna do, is ready to be adopted. So if there's other changes, we can do that, but should you so want to do so, should you so want to, you could adopt it tonight.
Commissioners, do you want the public to be allowed to speak now, or do you want, how do you wanna proceed?
I'll be following me.
Anyone want to speak about the budget? All right, well, now I recognize you, if you will come to the podium, give us your name and so forth.
Good evening, Keith Smith, one oh-five Durham Street. Um, a couple of things that, that I'm just curious about, when I'm looking over the, the audits from the last couple of years, um, and you can discuss whatever, but looks like in two thousand twenty-one, just as far as the, the income for the town itself, not including FEMA or any of that kinda stuff, looks like at the end of the years, it looks like we had a little over five hundred thousand net during those two years, uh, net proceeds, net increase. I don't know if that was all from taxes versus the city's expenses, or if FEMA was wrapped up in that or whatever, but at the end of the year, both years, according to the, the audit for two thousand twenty-two, there's a little over five hundred thousand increase for both years. And so, we're talking about raising taxes, another almost five hundred thousand, and so I'm wondering, if we're operating within our means, then what's, what is our reason for increasing the taxes? I mean, if it's because we, hey, we need to build a new water tower, okay, but what, if we could simplify that, 'cause I know when you look at the audit, I mean, there's everywhere, especially with the FEMA thrown there, thrown in, there's really, really large numbers, it's just some things could get conflated. So, here's what I'm afraid of, we're increasing by five hundred thousand, we had five hundred thousand last year, the pier's gonna cost a million, okay, so we're paying taxes for the pier. And I know in the last meeting, that was a big concern, rightfully so, 'cause everybody said, hey, we're not gonna raise taxes for the pier, and so, but that's the, that's the appearance that it has, and so if we could address that somehow and simplify that so that it doesn't look like, hey, we're raising taxes so we can pay for the pier. I mean, I know we got increased money from parking that, that wasn't accounted in like the two twenty-one budget, so if, if that could be easily done, because right now, as far as the POA, they sent a letter out, said, okay, the increase is one point three, we're spending one point three on the pier, that's where the money's going. And so I think the perception might be off there, or it might be right, I don't know. So that's my question, is the perception right, or is the perception wrong, and we can explain it some other way. So, and I know you don't answer my questions, so I'm not, I'm asking the question hypothetically.
Okay, yeah, we, we don't get into debate in the public comment, but I'm sure the commissioners will take it in consideration as a talk, talk about it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Keith.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Martiara Wood, one fourteen Shrimp Street. Um, I'm here really, I, I attended all three workshops, one of them, I was the only one here, but I've learned a lot, and I think one thing, and I think it addresses Mr. Smith, is this confusion, the B Part money is occupancy taxes, that's what's paid by the people who rent the houses. The B Part Fund is where the pier, avenue queue, and those things come from. So as a property owner on Holden Beach, I don't see my property taxes going up to pay for the pier, avenue queue, and whatever, as long as it's coming out of the B Part Fund. What I do wanna do is commend the commissioners for acting on budget items that have been kicked down the can year after year after year after year. I heard the maintenance department talk about there was a schedule for replacing vehicles every so many years, so that there was a trade-in value, and it never was done, it never was done, it never was done, for whatever reason. Same thing with inspections, vehicles, lawn mowers, I guess it was so we didn't have to raise the tax or something, but sooner or later, all of those things have to be replaced, and it's almost like they're coming to a head now. The employees, they did a study five years ago that said, what can we do to get salaries up to scale? Nobody should come to work in this county hourly, twenty years later be making maybe two dollars more than what they wanna start a salary with for a new employee, that's not fair. And as a retired teacher, I know what that means. So this Board of Commissioners has taken on some tough things that way, and as long as I know that my property tax value or my taxes for my property is going to maintain vehicles that are operational to make sure that Mr. Clemmons doesn't get electrocuted in a storm, or to make sure that we are competitive with other beaches, as far as hiring policemen, it, it worried me to go, what, two years, we were down at least one policeman, because, um, the chief couldn't get anybody to come work for us for that amount. And, um, you know, that's the difference, I don't mind paying taxes if I see the benefits. I also think that our commissioners should take a stand now on the budgeting, they, they've got perfectly good parkland on the other side that was paid for by the county years ago. We should be pushing the county commissioners to, to suck it up and help us, there could be a boat ramp over there, there could be public parking over there. And so I think there, there needs to be, so Brunswick County's not getting any smaller. I moved here thirty-four years ago, there was more green space than there was houses. Now it's the other way around, and I'm one hundred percent, if we can find a patch of property that we can work it in our budget to buy, to maintain a park, or to have some green space, I think we oughta be doing it, because the street I lived on had five houses when I moved here, there is, but two vacant lots now. And so, but I do think there's, there's some confusion, and I just, I hope I'm right, the B Part Funds are the occupancy taxes, those people who come outside, so the money has to be used for recreation for them, like the pier, avenue queue, things like that. And I think there's some misunderstanding that we as taxpayers are being, wherever it's coming from, the misinformation, that our property taxes pay for that, and it's not our property taxes, it's the renter taxes. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else wanna speak? Yes, sir.
Brent Shaver, one twenty-one Tarkin, um, it's not a lot of money, but a dollar's a dollar. And I noticed we had kayak launches on here, and I don't know if that's talking about the selfish park changes that are in the works or not, but selfish park is not broken. If you drive down that community, uh, tonight or tomorrow, you'll see how many people got signed in the yards, they want a park left like it is. So, you're gonna be looking for ways maybe to, to shave a dollar here, shave a dollar there. Um, and I know it's not part of the overall budget, but just remember that, that that's where you can get some money if you want it, because the people that live in that community don't want that park changed. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Tom Myers, three oh-one Ocean Boulevard West. Um, I sent you an email with this, I'm gonna read it so that it gets in the record, and also I need to update one of the numbers to reflect the changes that were made at the June first, uh, meeting. But I've studied the budget, and, uh, there are three things really jumped off the page and hit me in the face, and I wanna just cover those three points. Uh, the first, my takeaway is our past spending has now come home to roost in terms of our loan payments. Uh, there's a schedule in the budget message that shows our debt service is three point six million. The budget message also says our property tax revenues are three point three million. So, basically that means if we took all our property taxes, they still aren't enough to pay for our debt. This also means we are dependent on tourist dollars, B Part Funds, paid parking, to pay the bills, if you put the two funds together. Uh, this is, to me, a somewhat risky situation, because we can't guarantee the B Part revenue, um, we're vulnerable to storms, there's a risk that a major storm early in the year could devastate our tourist season, so that's my assessment of the, the revenue situation. Um, second point is, in spite of this, um, we plan to keep digging a hole in terms of spending more money than we bring in. Uh, we're moving forward with a significant number of expensive multi-year projects. Uh, the capital improvement plan, the SIP, in the budget message lists projects totaling up to seven point two million for next year, that excludes the canal dredging, uh, and many of these projects are multi-year, require additional funding in future years, so the spending will continue. Third and final point is that I feel we're mortgaging our future by paying for this excess, this deficit spending using our savings and the fund balances instead of just raising taxes. Uh, we're gonna spend one point three million out of fund balances, it said two point three, but that didn't reflect the million dollar production that you made in May first, or June first. Um, we're gonna need this money for future beach nourishment. Um, years ago, we had a goal that we would set aside a million dollars a year to save for the next nourishment project. This money is basically being depleted. To cover the budgeted expenses in the budget now and not use our fund balances or borrow money, the tax rate needs to be twenty-three point eight cents, which is an increase of ninety-eight percent. If we wanna do this and then also set aside a million dollars for future beach nourishment, the tax rate needs to be twenty-eight cents, an increase of a hundred and thirty-three cents. So these are the facts, I understand them. Personally, I would rather pay for today's expenses with today's dollars and set aside for the future, because the day will come where we need that money to put sand on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jim Bauer, three twenty-nine Ocean Boulevard West. Uh, backing up what Tom says, the first springs need to be pulled a little bit closed, and the easiest thing to do is just let the pier just sit there and not spend any money on it. Seven ninety-six OBW should be sold. There's no reason to put money into these projects now, especially considering the dire financial circumstances we might be in, we might all be involved with, because of sun, unforeseen storm, natural emergency, something like that. Um, you should remove any spending on the pier or any, and, and immediately try to sell any, any property that we can that can be sold, and try to make up these, these balances, because what are we going to do with it? When you, when you sell, when you, you sell something, what, what do you get out of it? Well, you get the purchase price of the land. You also add another piece of taxable property onto the tax rolls. You eliminate the insurance and other liabilities that you have with the pieces of property. The pier right now, I, I can't imagine that nobody's been hurt on it yet, some kids will climb up at night and get hurt or something like that, I'm, I'm actually astounded about that. But what should be done is you should trim everything that you can away from this budget, and those are two very, very easy starting points. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I thought I saw another hand somewhere. Okay, one now. Yes?
Um, I understand the concern, I, I understand, but at the same time, we have to be visionary. Uh, and, and I made this statement, and I'm guilty of not being here as often as I should, but, um, I made this statement early on last year, that my grandfather said one time they're not making any more land. That land is not going to devalue at the end. So if we hang on to it, it, it's not going to devalue. Uh, I hoped that we would open it and we would start generating revenue from it as, as quickly as possible, but, uh, I thank y'all for the job you do, uh, the sacrifices that you make, because I know it's a tough job, uh, and, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there another hand somewhere? Everybody satisfied you had a chance to talk? Okay. We're gonna move on unless the commissioners want to, uh, discuss or possibly take action of any kind on item number four. You wanna move on, or you wanna linger on number four?
What's your pleasure, Rick? I, I do wanna say a couple of things about the budget. First off, I do wanna clear up that the general fund is absolutely in no way, shape, or form paying for the pier or block queue. I could, I have my own vision of what the money's going to, but in reality, it's going to a lot of different things, but I can think of two that would inhale the whole two cent tax increase, off the top of my head, that's just come about this year, and that's the salary increases, we've had two large ones, one last year, one in this budget, and we gotta get ADA compliant. And we have a lot of properties that are not ADA compliant, and we've, we, we have to improve on that, those, those people deserve to be, to have access to the beach, and it's gonna cost some money, so just those two things along with a myriad of other stuff is gonna eat up that two cent. I'm not a doom and gloom guy, so I want that pier open, I wanna see that building built back to whatever it can be, and it will generate more revenue. I said all along that I hoped, you know, when we had the vision of buying the pier along with my, my counterpart that's no longer with us, that we had to develop a way, a revenue stream to pay for this thing, because a lot of people weren't willing to do that, they weren't willing to raise taxes to do that. I also said at the time, it was a smoking deal, because of the price of the real estate that we bought was extremely low. I do know that a oceanfront lot, a fifty-foot oceanfront lot now is pushing nine hundred thousand dollars. I think Alan can back me up. So, we got those pier lots, if you divide them and do the math, we got them cheap. Now, we can't sell the pier property anymore, part of the million dollars that you leave out is we got a check for, in the form of a grant.
Five hundred thousand.
So it's five hundred thousand dollars, it's not a million that we're spending, it's actually the difference. And part of that, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, is for the access that's gonna be next to it that we absolutely have to put in now, because we didn't buy the remainder of the campground, and the access that we were using is gone, or will be gone effectively probably the end of July or August. So I don't see doom and gloom, I mean, none of us can prevent a storm, and I don't care how much we save, we can't sell fund as a town footing the entire bill to put sand back on this beach, we're gonna need help, we're gonna have to go look for help, we're gonna have to look for grants to do some of these projects, and we have a great team in this town that, that's actively doing that. And we pulled back a million dollars on the pier, because we knew we were gonna have some shortfalls, and it was kind of, it was kind of out there to go ahead and appropriate that money to spend it. I look at a budget like some of these numbers may never get spent, and they don't, they're in there, they got a number on a piece of paper, but if we don't get the permits, and we don't get the permission, and we don't have the plans in place by the engineers and whatnot, or the municipal, the legal municipal, the, the legal groups that we have to get permission from, we may not be able to do anything. So the money may never get spent. So, some of these will be placeholders, some of these won't get used, and some of, some of them will be more than we have in there. So, that's my vision on the budget, I, we fight it every year, year after year, Chris needs this, Tim needs this, you know, it's, there's so many more things, I mean, it's never gonna end, you got a fire department we gotta deal with, you got a water tower we possibly gotta deal with, you got infrastructure that's rotting away, you got town facilities that have to be maintained, it, it's an endless, it, it will always be something, and, and this is what it is at this point in time, and I think we have made the best decision that we can to try to be responsible and reel some of this back and do what we can, but at the same time, people wanna see us go forward and get this stuff done, they want it, they want the facilities, they want the bathrooms, they don't want Port of Johns, they want a place, and I, you know, I, we're never gonna be able to please everybody, never happened. You see that in the country right now, so we're doing, as far as I'm concerned, we're doing the best we can up here. But the two cent in the, in the general fund, absolutely, just shut that down going to the pier and block queue, because it's not happening. We stopped the transfer, and that was a million dollars, and we shut that down, last meeting. So, we're not, you know, we're not being irresponsible with the money. In some people's eyes, I guess we are, but we're doing, we're making the best decisions that we can make as a group, and they're never easy. Do we buy a truck, don't we buy a truck? You sure you need a truck, let's drive this truck. Let's drive this truck. But then it's, you know, it's always something. You want to have a stack of water meters? You want extra fire hydrant when one goes down? I mean, we have to have them sitting up at Town Hall, and then nobody ever thinks about debt service. You know, you spoke of debt service. Everybody should be provided with the debt service in this town because in a couple years, a lot of debt falls off, barring anything unforeseen that comes up. I'm sure something will take its place, but a lot of things come off. Central Reach is a huge one, but it's 26, 27. I mean, we're a few years away from that. But once that comes off, if we don't have a storm between now and then, then that's a massive amount of money that we no longer have to pay. E O C, Town Hall, there's a bunch of them. And this stuff's sitting here, you can touch it, it's worth money. I don't think it's going down in value, and I don't, I just, if the town got in a bind and had to sell property, then maybe so. But until that point, I'm not for selling anything. I would, I'm agreeing with Marty that, you know, land around here is precious, that doesn't have houses on it. So you'll never replace the pier property, and it won't go down in value. It's already massively increased in value. So I think we made outstanding purchases, and hopefully for the good of the public and the people, like you say, B part is made up by vacationers and people that come here to enjoy this town, and we have to provide, you know, accommodations and facilities for those people. Not a Port of John with no toilet paper, facilities. Like human beings, they deserve that, and so does the people of the town. You know, I've had a million compliments on the bathrooms at the pier. I wish we had three or four of them. So that's my take, and that's just the way I feel, and I'm just one person, so.
Well, Brian, I've got to add to that somewhat. I did a lot of, I was at the local government commission when we told them we weren't going to raise taxes or use taxes to make improvements on the pier. I took that to heart with the $500,000 grant we got with adding the park, some of the parking and some of the B part money. It more than amply takes care of what we want to do. And if everybody will stick around, we've got Chip Hewat, our plan's on there, or since we reduced it by a million dollars, I think we've got a good plan to move forward and get that, at least the pier part usable where we can generate some revenue. But as he said, that B part money that we bring in, that is from the people that come and spend time at Holden Beach. And having a place like the pier that has been in my life for 60 years plus is, I think, is important to the town as well as our visitors. Now, you know, we had a lot of people that were very much against the pier, but there seems to have been a softening of those. They see that the benefits of the parking, they see the benefits of the people, instead of trying to park on the street and run between their house, they've got a nice place to go and park and have a restroom and go out on the beach. The same up toward my house in 800 Block. It seemed what we're doing is seems to be working. And again, if we don't, if we sit here and live in a shell, we're not going to get anywhere. We've got, we have got to look at 23, 24, 24, 25, 25, 26. And as we had Daniel run us an amortization chart, and a lot of our debt is, we're getting close to it going away, and it's going to free up some extra funds every year after that that we can, you know, put some savings back for the beaches and stuff, for the nourishment, as well as do some of these other capital improvement projects. But again, being in the transportation business as long as I have, I realize that if these guys don't keep their equipment up, keep them rotated, you know, we live in a harsh environment down here, and it's required that they keep those vehicles up. If you don't, we're going to have to start over, and that is very expensive. So them being smart enough to rotate these through and do them a few at a time makes a whole lot more sense than trying to replace the entire fleet. As Brian said, we, this was a painful, and things, things that we had to take off, you know, we always, David had it as the worst case scenario where we had everything that we'd ever want, but then we had to stop and say, well, there's some things we just can't have. But we got to look after our employees. We can't replace them. Right, I mean, we can't get new employees to replace them. Number one, the brain, you know, the brain power there. You can't train somebody to do what these cats do. They know their jobs, they know what they do, and they do a good job of it, and need to be compensated for it. We don't want to lose them, so we need to make sure they come to work every day happy and are very productive, and that's the way I think we've got it right now. So the budget as it stands, I think with the changes that we made, which, you know, I spent a lot of time looking at numbers, and is, anything that I had question about, either Christie, or David, or Heather Won, or Daniel would help me with them to understand what they were doing and where they were going, and I don't see anything frivolous in what we're looking at right now. Doc, your thoughts?
Well, to add to what Brian said about the general fund, we're all property owners up here. The last thing we want to do is raise taxes, but any property owner in this town feels like raising taxes to take care of our employees and to become ADA compliant, I mean, that's just not something we can, we can set aside. The employees, the study that was done several years ago proved that our employees were severely underpaid, and, you know, as we raised it, two weeks later, Jeremy hired another police officer. And with the season that's coming in, with the increased tourists and everything, we need these officers here. Things are, things are a lot more hectic, and there's a lot more people here, and they just don't seem, the COVID era is over, people aren't as happy and easy to please, so we need the officers. So I, I mean, we did, we did everything we could, but we just can't see not paying our employees the money that they, if we don't have them, the town doesn't run, then we're not going to get the B part funds, and we're not going to be able to do the things we need to do. So, you know, we looked at everything that we possibly could, and I think Brian said it well and Rick that that's what we looked at for the reason to have to raise the taxes.
Ted, you got anything?
Well, just some general observations. I think Brian well said earlier, as somebody said, reminded me about vision, nothing great ever rose to touch the skies unless somebody first had the vision to make it happen. Then it doesn't happen unless somebody is willing to take the risk to make it happen. Stewardship involves risk. There's nothing guaranteed. We're talking about property, pier property and other property. It's the people's property now. We want to do with it what becomes the people of this town. You go about it in some second-rate, cheap fashion, that's the result you're going to get. Nobody's going to be happy with it. We will, we are taking risks. And Rick, as you said, the environment here on the coast, every town takes a risk when it, I think historically, something a lot of people, all you folks are young, you wouldn't remember this, but was a time in North Carolina when all of the roads and all of the schools were maintained by the individual counties. It was during the Great Depression when we had no money and not much hope for any, that the state took the risk and said, we will take over the schools and we will take over the roads. And look what it meant to this state. Again, I go back to this town. I'm new here, I've been quiet. I commend you for what you've done. You've taken some risk, but you look forward to the future, to the people. There's no guarantee, and the people who are opposed to, say, the pier or what you're doing, they're going to be opposed to it no matter if you go right, left, do nothing, do something. There's no guarantee. But good stewardship, you have to be prudent, but there are risks that you have to be willing to take.
All right. Mr. Hewitt, you got anything to add?
No, sir.
Judge, I got a kick out of you saying you're new here. I guess you meant you're new to the board because Holden Beach is about six or seven years in your history.
Well, I'm older than the rest of y'all. I've just been here a lot of years.
I will just say, I'd remind the board that if the board chooses to do so, y'all could approve the budget tonight.
Well, that's what I was going to say. I don't see that unless the doc does, or Judge, or Brian, I think I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve ordinance 2311 for revenues and expenses for fiscal year 2324.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Open for discussion. Anybody?
The only thing that I'd like to add, and it'll be brief, Mr. Mayor, is the part about the ADA compliance. Guys, that's not a joke. There are federal laws that require us to look after the folks that aren't as healthy as we are to get to walk in here like we do. So we've got to look out after the people with disabilities, and that's not cheap. They've already started at Hollister Park, they've already started in a couple of other locations. We're going to, we're going to get this island where everybody, whether they're special needs or not, can come visit our beach. And that's, and again, that's, that's take $200,000. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm done.
Anyone else? Comments? Otherwise, a more common question. The vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. And unanimously approve the budget. Adam Curry. Okay, we're on number five, quarterly workshop. Mr. Hewitt, unless you want to say something before we go?
No, sir. We, um, I've got a, just a brief preamble before we ask Chip to stand up, and this may come out as a course of that, but just wanted to start off with...
Where am I starting off?
I've got a list of our projects here, but I'm going to start with the pier property renovation. Let Chris, Chip come up, we can talk through that, and then I'll go through the updates on the other things. But after talking with Tim today on the pier property, we believe that we're ready to submit the CAMA permit. The piling boars are supposed to be performed tomorrow, so those guys are getting ready to stick a, stick a piling in the ground or stick a big corkscrew in the ground out there. But after Chip does his thing, I would go over the other updates there, if that's okay.
Okay. All right. You're on.
Chip Hemingway, Wilmington, Wilmington. And, uh, that screen, but I'm just going to give you an update on where we are with the pier renovation design documents, and ready to receive any kind of directives or changes because, uh, oh, wait. I understand that appropriated maybe less budget than the overall project might take, and so we can customize the drawings to fit within the current budget, and, you know, our plan is to renovate the pier first, get it into working order, which is replacing all the structural connections, all the bolts that have basically weathered away to nothing, you can't even tell what they are, and replace all the cross members that have split due to forces or age or drying out or a combination of all three. We're, I guess, in our, in my structural, I don't have structural engineer drawings because I don't, you know, just, we're not going to get into the nuts and bolts of it to that degree, but there are five pylons out there that are damaged, and our plan is to repair those pylons from above. That's our plan, and not do any work from a barge in the water to reduce costs. And I just want to say, overall, as the directives that you've given us, given to us, that we're doing this project as efficiently as possible. There are no extra drills or extra design components that are outside of just getting the pier into working order and turning the property into something the town can truly enjoy for years to come. And also getting the emergency vehicle access and an ADA ramp at the pier property to the beach strand. Providing, you know, new public restrooms that will be a very nice restroom facility. It'll be inside the footprint of the existing building, but there will be access from the exterior of the pier house. Let's see, what else? Soil borings are getting ready to take place, they're going to show up tomorrow, and so soil borings will allow our structural engineer to determine what kind of loading capacity the soils have. And so as we talked about before, you know, we're going to, we're going to tear down the existing pier from the pier house to, you know, to the high tide line as a result. It's in the worst condition of, you know, the whole pier, but also it does not meet ADA requirements, and so we're going to make the pier ADA accessible so everyone can enjoy it. Also, it should strengthen the base of the pier and provide a much-needed kind of outfit to the visual conditions beyond the structural conditions, a much nicer facility. Let's see. Let's see, you want to go, go up the slides ahead? This is the building data, something part of every construction project. Just keep on going.
Keep going.
Yeah, that's the existing plan survey we worked off of, or working off of. Keep going. And here's the new plan. We've shown where the pier used to be out there, and we've kind of done an educated estimate on that, on the links and where the existing piles are, and we're showing that so it could be included in the CAMA permit just in case, you know, it ever wanted to be extended out to its original link, it would be in the CAMA permit. But we're not planning on doing that at this time. Let's see, we're going to resurface the parking lot, we're going to, we're going to have new plumbing connections for the new wastewater, restroom facilities. We've, we came up with a kind of plan for the interior of the building of like what we thought was the best use of this thing, and I don't think the budget's going to allow us to renovate the interior of that at this time. So that could evolve or change or become something completely different than what we envisioned, but what we thought would be a great use of the building and just exactly how it's been used for decades is have a tackle shop, pier house, tackle shop, and gift shop on one side, and then have a grill slash restaurant concessions building on the other side. Here's the existing building that we're going to demo all the walls within, leaving all the columns and structural elements. Let's go to the next slide. And here's the plan that we came up with, where we had some outdoor seating on the beach at beach level. You can see our ADA ramp snaking its way up to the appropriate level that we could then continue to ramp. So the way the pier was originally built, its ADA wasn't such So, the way the pier was originally built, because ADA wasn't such thing, it, you know, just impossible to get the existing pier up at an ADA slope. And so, we'll have stairs coming up those first few flights, however, the ramp bypasses the stairs. And so, if we... Our plan is to renovate the pier in this first phase, get it operational. And so, if the building needs to wait, we can just provide a corridor straight through the building, put doors on the front, and close it down when needed, or it can stay open twenty-four-seven, like a lot of piers do. And you can see that our public restroom's on the left, and we've added in the windbreak, which was a good, great suggestion. I've talked all the time about the wind, put it on the coast. So, we got that in there. So, the interior of the building at this point is the most un... Could change the most of anything we're doing right now.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask you about that, the interior of the building and the old net. Still, what we're looking at now is it will still stay on the ground?
That's correct.
I guess I'm talking about experiences that I've had, projects I've worked on, about taking old buildings and renovating them. It tends to take a lot longer than you think it's gonna take. It always costs more than you think it's gonna cost, and ain't nobody happy with it when they're through with it. And always, five years later, everybody's still wishing they had torn it down and started over and built something new. That's the fear I have, that before we're headed with this.
Well, you could build a new building, but if funds don't allow it, you gotta work with what you have. And I think what we've come up with for this restaurant facility and the tackle shop will be a universal way from what was there by using the same structure. Just putting some windows in that building, opening that concessions up to the beach strand. I mean...
It doesn't take much to move it beyond where it is now.
Exactly. You're right.
But it's still on the ground, and if one of those surges comes through there, it comes through it.
Right, that's correct.
The way it always has.
Oh, yeah.
And that's a big, that's a big risk.
Yeah, I mean, it is. However, you know, if you look at what's being built in there, it's, there's not a lot of infrastructure. We're thinking, you know, it's gonna... It could, I think it's been flooded twice over its life, from what I understand. But you're right, when the flood comes, there's nothing good about it. However, this building, I guess what I'm trying to say is there's not so much in this building that you're gonna lose. You know, we're gonna have a concrete floor. We're gonna replace the wood floor with concrete. You can get a pressure wash that thing. Flood elevation is not greatly higher than existing finished floor elevation. So, you know, all our electrical equipment, all mechanical equipment will be above flood stage. Some restaurant equipment will be on the floor, of course, and whether, you know, whoever ends up leasing this space, you know, they'll have that risk, or, you know, that could potentially happen. But, you know, it can always potentially happen. All these coastal communities that I've worked in, I've worked in my whole career. Everybody knows it could happen one year, but it might not happen for thirty years.
Chip, with the current design on the left-hand side, there's pretty much an open space.
Right.
If someone... My thoughts are, if we get the pier open and starts to get the draw of the people using that facility, that somebody's gonna come along and want to lease that open space. And that would leave, that would leave pretty much them able to do what they want. If they wanted to spend the money on it, they could spend the money on it and outfit it the way they wanted to.
That's correct, yes. This, what we have drawn could go away, and someone else could come up with another plan for what they wanna use their leased space for.
And if they, David, if they were able to lease that, would they be allowed to outfit it along with Tim's blessings on what they wanted to do? I mean, if they leased it, they could fix the interior how they wanted it, as long as it met code, and they got a permit?
I thought that it was our intent all along, is basically provide a shell, and then they would outfit it as needed. The restaurant side of it, of course, is a bit more complex than that. But on the left side, that's a shell area. I mean, I think that's been our approach all along, or desire to do that all along.
I was just making sure that that was still...
Of course, it'd have to be a use that's acceptable within that district and coincidental with the elements that are in the grant that we've, you know, accepted half a million dollars on.
I think we discussed that. Christie had them discuss that with us live, one night via the phone. And as long as it's open to the public, everybody, you can't make it a private club or a private entity. It has to be used by everybody.
And of course, any outfit, and like you said, has got to be in accordance with building codes and Tim's muster.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, just glad you mentioned that, because we've been... I've been saying that, you know, there's gotta be a little pre-planning for the concessions, for the floor drain, or water supplies, and all the other things that you need for a restaurant-type facility. But in talking with my engineers, who are always giving me good ideas as well, you know, it could be on that side of the building, we just pour a perimeter strip of slab just to reinforce the walls and the existing foundation, and leave the slab out. That way, when someone renovates it, they could, they're free to run water drains, whatever they need to, under that slab at that time.
Good idea, Chip.
So, you know, of course, we have to work with building department to make sure we're doing everything the correct way. But that's an idea.
I have a question. So, looking with the budget that we approved and the money that we've got set aside for that right now, you were talking about phase one is the plan to get the pier open, so we can get the public on it.
Right.
So, in my impression, that's not including doing anything to the building?
Well, we would...
In that phase?
We would, we would... I think we would need to put a slab through the corridor, at the very least. We would need, you know, a public path through the building and exit through the building right through that corridor. So, there would be a concrete slab there, period.
Now, talking about using the shell of the building that you have now for someone to outfit, and I don't know who this question is directed to, if somebody comes along and wants to rent that, liability-wise, if they're gonna outfit it, put a bunch of equipment in it, where are we looking at? Town liability versus the person that rents it liability for, let's say, flooding? Or are they gonna be able to get insurance on their business, because they're in an area that's not raised? Will they be able to go in there, open a business, and be covered, and be successful, if that makes any sense?
I get flood insurance on my house, and it's not covered enough. So, it's, you can get it, it's just costly.
That's what I'm saying. A person, as far as when we're going to rent... Somebody that's leasing that, they're gonna have to take into consideration with the building and the location that it is now, that they'll have to anticipate that expense, correct?
Right, yes.
Well, let me throw my real estate experience in, if I may. They rent the right to locate their business there. The building will belong to the town, and the contents will belong to the person that's leasing. So, they can get their insurance for what they own, and the town will get the insurance for what the town owns. The town's liability coverage will be like the standard on any of our other properties, and the operating party of the business will have their liability insurance for their operation. So, there shouldn't be any issues. I mean, it's done all the time.
Yeah, yeah, I just...
But you're right, it's something that...
That's something that, as a small business owner, that's something that a business owner's gonna have to look at.
Absolutely.
To be concerned that...
But it's easily done. Your points well made, but it's easily done. It's not a big deal.
But the plan with the budget we approved today is to get the pier open and get people on it?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm...
And so, we're planning on new lights, new handrails, decking where it's needed. Depending on the budget, if we redeck it, or, you know, the decking on it, a lot of the decking on it can go quite a bit longer.
Well, because the building and the restaurant, that's gonna be great. It's gonna be great revenue for the town. But I think in the short term, the public concern right now is people, and buying that land, people wanna get on that pier. We can get hot dogs and hamburgers for them later.
Right.
We need to get people on that pier.
Absolutely.
We need to get ADA compliant, and we need to get that moving along. I think that's the primary concern.
That's the way I understand it.
I have a question in regards to the oceanfront outdoor seating. The elevation of that, is that relative to the floor of the inside of the building? What's the difference?
There is no difference. There might be a... ADA allows you to have a three-quarter inch change in elevation, like a door threshold. But it would basically be flat across.
Well, if we can keep that southwest wind from blowing in the afternoons, people can eat out there. Sitting behind that sand dune with a fifteen mile an hour wind, there gonna be some gritty french fries and hamburgers and stuff out there.
Well, you're right.
Well, and following up too, Tim, the concrete is cheaper. Is there anything that prevents us from putting concrete slab there instead of wood?
Well, you're actually on the toe of doing on that side. We'd have to make application in the realm where you're gonna make application. But sure the CAMA rules say you can't have it, I'm not sure you can.
I'm just thinking that...
My first impression would be, as long as we're landward as a toe of that dune, because that is the CAMA protocol.
Right.
Then we would probably be okay to have concrete. As long as we don't... We gotta be careful what we see as far as storm floor. We don't have that issue with wooden decking. It's considered permeable. The concrete's gonna be considered inpermeable, and so, they may trigger some of the permit.
I'd like for us to look at that, at least.
Yeah, I think we need to keep clean and...
Take the water better.
Yeah.
Well, I will make one comment on that, is that the potential for wind-driven rain to be, you know, accumulate on that concrete.
Sheeding across.
And driving into the building. I know it...
And that is true.
At Janess Pier, we had a, I think, fifteen-foot wide deck, covered deck, and a three-foot overhang with a gutter on that, so it was like eighteen feet, four inches. And wind-driven rain came right on in that upper floor of that building.
Or maybe some combination.
Yeah, yeah, and we could break it, like put a slab out there and then have a strip that, but...
Put lots of grooves in it, so if we have a storm that hits, it won't break the whole thing. But anyway, we can talk about that later.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and that platform would be something that might happen when the place is leased and someone comes up for a plan. You know, you could easily come up... There's room on the other side of the building for outdoor seating. And I think on our master plan, we showed picnic tables out there, so people could go out there and sit. You know, but at night, and twenty-four-seven, that could be a pretty popular spot, as long as the southwest winds.
How confident are you that we can realistically have this thing open next summer?
Well...
I know you're not gonna be driving the nails yourself, but...
Yeah. I would say, you know, we, nine-month construction period, and we busted on through, getting ready for review from the town, and approved for a building permit and out for bids, I feel like it's a good chance.
I would think so.
Yeah. But we're marching ahead at this time. You know, my plumbing mechanical and electrical engineers are waiting for me to give them the results of this meeting. You know, we're not gonna outfit the building. We're not gonna even put any HVAC system in the building. I'm thinking, you know, that corridor, we could have a door on one side. I don't know, maybe we need, we could put a little mini-split in there.
I'm gonna throw one comment, and I grew up cooking hot dogs and french fries over a grill in an air-conditioned facility at Service Side of the Vine. And I'm gonna tell you, in today's rules, when you're sitting there flipping those hamburgers and the sweat's dripping off your nose on top of the grill... I don't know, I don't know how that kind of location's gonna go at today's health department.
Hold on, no, we're certainly gonna air-condition it in the buildings.
But not for this particular...
But if, just for the corridor through...
Oh, okay, all right. I misunderstood what you're saying, okay.
You know, I don't know if we need... We could show a mini-split in there. If it's over budget, we can take it out, put some operable windows through there.
Okay.
You know, you just use it that way for this summer, or next summer, this coming summer.
But Chip, the volume of the pier itself shows a little platform out to the east side that has been used in the past for our sunrise services and so forth. And I would imagine that that, probably that portion right there could be used for some type of entrance way into the pier, where we can, you know, there'd have to be a revenue stream coming in, and we could use that area right there as a... You could walk up to here, but after you go out on the pier, it's gonna cost you a dollar, or whatever, whatever they come up with.
That's right.
As long as we leave that portion out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We, I think we stopped right before that.
Okay, cool. Yeah, it looks like you did.
And so, that's kind of where we are. We've got one feature we're putting on the pier as you enter on the... If you go forward a couple of slides, let's see, there's one slide forward. That's the existing elevations of the building. Okay, there, there's the existing building. Those shows our new window openings and door openings. The color, I think, is basically the same, but it could be painted any color. But the one thing I noticed when walking out on the pier and then walking back, how you can see right up on the roof of the existing pier house. And so, what we're proposing is to build a trellis, a timber trellis, at the entrance of the, at the entrance to the pier house from the pier, and that we light at night, and it'd be an inexpensive visual barrier from looking on the roof. Kind of give it glow at night, and be a real nicely lit, safe place to enter and exit. And also help with our plans that we're to kind of barricade the pier from kids jumping on, coming on the pier in the times that it's not closed, which I don't know when that would be.
Yeah, it needs to be made secure.
Chief of gentlemen went toward the police department. I don't know if it's an emergency or what it is.
Chip, I've had a couple of people ask, and this is really back to the ADA thing. Somebody goes out on the pier in a wheelchair and it's hot. Is there any plans for like any kind of sheltered area or something, or a pull-off area, so to speak, where they wouldn't be in the way?
At this time, we don't have any of that added, but we will put in some ADA handrails. And so, typically, they're forty-two inches, drop them down to thirty at two or three, however, you know... however many, you know, could be just two places that would be, would allow someone in a wheelchair to finish off the pier much more easily. We put some of those at Janice Pier. But we don't have any, anything planned for as far as shade at this time.
It was more of a, you know, like the accessways to the beach, when, let's say you're wheelchair-bound and you roll out your handicap access and you get to the end, the concern is that you're in the way, you know, you're in the middle of the access in your wheelchair, you got, you need like a parking spot at the end, for lack of a better word, you need a place to pull off so people can continue to walk by you, and it was just brought up, if there was going to be any area like that on the pier, and I just, I couldn't answer the question.
Yeah, well, I think on a lot of ADA walkways and docks, that you see, waterways, or I've seen, they have these pull-offs because they're too narrow for a wheelchair and somebody pulling a wagon or a haul of fish rides on. But the pier itself is, I don't know...
Plenty wide.
Yes, plenty wide, so it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a barrier for people to maneuver or strip someone on a wheelchair.
I would think you could probably pick a spot or two, like a place on the mall, so that they would be secure from the traffic, so it wouldn't require any operation, it would just be a safe place for them to be, because the pier is already wide enough, but it would be a safe place for them to be, instead of them being out of the way.
Right.
So, you could actually have two or three of those, they would have designated as handicap areas on the pier with a protective box, so they could actually get on one side of it, never require any, I think that would be minor modification.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so we'll drop a handrail at the ADA fishing locations, and we could put six-by-six up right through the distant Joyce, that's a good idea.
That'd be a good idea, since those ratings lower at that point. Cool.
That would be their spot.
And, and the benches that are out there, you know, Janice Pier, we, we designed these elaborate, comfortable benches on Janice Pier, and they take up a lot of room. And so, I was just, we're doing some work up there, and I was like, man, up here down Holden Beach, we've got some benches that are awesome, and they don't take up any room, you know, just the plank and the way they're secured to the handrail and... Well, that's, that's the old-school way.
Common sense.
As a kid, I remember those, and, you know, we could go back with those if you want.
Yep.
Okay.
It worked.
Any more questions?
Chip, I would like to thank you for taking the time to come and visit with us again. We were, again, at the, at the beginning of our budget talks, we had to take some, take a little bit out, and that was one area that we could, and we didn't want to abandon the project, but if you could help us work through getting that part open and get the, work with Tim, I know he's worked awful hard to get stuff moving forward, so again, thank you for your time this evening to come and to visit with us.
All right, well, you're welcome, and I just want to say, you know, it's an honor for me to work on a project like this, because I've worked on these things, kind of things up and down the coast of North Carolina, and public facilities for the public use are very important, and they're hard to come by on the beaches, and piers are disappearing, and I think, and as far as things to do on Holden Beach, this was going to be a hot one, in my humble opinion.
I agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda that I have is adjournment.
I'd like to make, I'm not David or Heather, do y'all have any...
I was just going to go over the, the other items from the quarterly update.
All right.
Unless y'all don't want to hear it.
No.
No.
Better rip.
Well, Chip's taking care of the pier property update, and I will be brief. Our coastal storm damage reduction study, we've been working with the Corps and answering their inquiries on some things that they required concerning economics and tax data, in addition to providing some specific information on sand searches, and we're to the point there now where we've got a monthly working group schedule established. On the stormwater mitigation project, Chris, feel free to chime in any time that I say something wrong here, but we've pretty much finished our video of our pipes and culverts, and of course, there's a bad place over on Ocean Boulevard East, DOT has been notified that. Do they get over there yet to fix that? Or they just pumped a bunch of concrete in it?
They've actually been notified, and it's just ten for the repairs and what they did, and they're actually saying that they're going to replace that whole culvert by the way they paid Ocean Boulevard, which I've been talking with them about that for about a year or so, and kind of jumping in some of the camera work that we've done, I'm not surprised that it's flat, because it was basically like a spider web, it's flat, it's so bad, it came from under the roof, but DOT's aware of it, maybe to be taken care of before we get a paid job.
But the, I think that the point to make here is that this inventory and assessment with the, the master plan development on, on stormwater, that's exactly the type of information that the Corps of Engineers is going to require for their environmental infrastructure funding, you know, we had a hundred thousand dollars earmarked federal appropriation that's going to basically pay for the Corps to scope the project for us, we're going to use our engineer and come up with projects that we have the opportunity to qualify for up to twelve million dollars in North Carolina of funding for a bunch of that stormwater work. Now, we'll have to do a match on it, but still, that's, that's the intent or the secondary purpose of doing that, that stormwater plan. Green engineering is, is busy, still busy getting the inventory and data collection out in the field for the development of the water system asset inventory, and they're currently mapped in GIS, they're probably about twenty-five percent of the way through there on that, I mean, that's how much of the budget that we spend on them, so that's a, that's a work in progress. I do want to talk about that, at the risk of being redundant, the modular toilet installed and operational at the pier, my point is that we've also been invited to submit a public access grant final application from KAMA, that's going to be due in August with a public hearing required to submit on that, and that's for Block Key, the side over there. So, that'll be coming back, back to y'all for consideration. I talked with Randy today concerning the development over there, and Phil has, has committed to providing an express permit to me next week for signature, the first of next week, so got to have that KAMA permit, and that's, that's the first takedown of their, our ADA access plan, Tim has been beating it up. Now, I'm telling you, he's been really going off on and coordinating with, with everybody that needs to be coordinated with. The short version is that we've got our KAMA permit submitted for the, the east end, should be ready this Friday, one fourteen OBE, Quentin, KAMA permits in hand, plans, got a quote, and the work there's supposed to start on Monday at eight oh one, Ocean Boulevard, the KAMA access, or KAMA permit has been applied for, so that should be Friday next week when we get that. So, once we get those permits in hand, our intent is to move forward and, and just knock those things off of that ADA compliance list. Sewer lift station improvements, I hope that we're not going to see a repeat that we did with the FEMA projects, in that every, about every six weeks, we get a new program manager, but we got one, so we've been working on getting all the agency inputs back to the Environmental Protection Agency so that we don't have to do a full-blown NEPA study, and hopefully that'll come together here for not too long, because we're going to have to integrate that effort with our borrowing for the match for the lift station. Now, borrowing schedule, I'll have that detailed more specifically next week when we talk with the local government commission and our financial consultants on what that schedule is, but there's going to, there's, it's going to be tight on getting our, if we're going to go for borrowing before October, then that gets into when the audit's done and everything, so we're going to try to shoehorn that in early, but it's going to take some coordination. Paid, paid parking adjustments, I think that this is, is closed as far as the rate structure decision that the board implemented a little bit a while ago, and of course, we're going to have to keep tweaking that thing to make sure that as the program moves into year two, that the fine points are taken into consideration. On seven ninety-six, the carpenter work's done, and painting is due to be completed next week, and we've got a meter pan and some AC work that remained too, I believe, unless there's something that's got it done. And that's, that's all I've got.
Any questions, comments from the commission?
David, did you have some information on the dredge spoils area? I think you shared some with us about, we've got some support from the, some of our congressmen and from the House.
That, that's a separate, separate thing, yes, sir. We do have, we do have a, a letter from our two senators, Senator Budd, Senator Tillis, and Congressman Rousler have all, all signed a letter to the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works, putting forth the town's position and advocating for non-federal use of core spoil islands. So, we believe that Senator Budd, this is going to be his issue, and that this is, this is good. I, I'm not aware of any other issue that's got three of our federal legislators' name on the letter, this may be something that happens all the time, but I'm not aware of it. So, this is, this is a good thing, that we're, we're getting it in front of the people that can influence the decisions.
That'll keep us available to haul the dredge spoils off the island, or something like that, to save us a tremendous amount of money, and that's what the dredge spoils areas are fully reading like.
It'll save you a whole lot of money and a whole lot of heartache, too, with dragging that mess up and down the road.
Yes, sir.
I'll go ahead and, and I've said it before and be on record, I'm a, I'm a proponent of hydraulic dredging, best way you got it.
Anything else, comments, whatever? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Say it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn. Thank you all.